We're going to have a work study session for July 9th, 2020. First, I just would like to take a quick moment and just thank you all for everyone who's bearing with the technology over the last couple of months, especially kind of moving into the future of the way that things work. It is so good to see everyone. We haven't been in the same room in a long time, and I appreciate each and every one of you and being able to see you. You and Marge, even though we're seeing you through the video, I just really appreciate everybody in their commitment to the school district. So with that, we'll start our work study. I'll turn it over to Dr. Kazmercek to get us into the work setting. Thank you. Do you need to roll off?
Local work study.
Trying to think what we normally do to roll off. So actually, I'll back up, and before that, I'll ask a question. Please call the roll.
Arkan?
Here.
Hello. Here. Chapman?
Here.
Allison? Here. Malon?
Here.
You asked her?
Here.
With that, thank you for the reminder. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Kazmercek to get us into the conversation.
All right. Thank you, Chair Mellon. Is this too much feedback if I have my mic on?
All right. So I will just translate while they are. All right. So this is the first time we've had an emergency since March 2nd, so it's very busy going. So and I just want to make mention to anyone who's watching remotely that we are practicing social distancing. Our chairs are about 12 feet apart. We're wearing masks. We have, so six of the seven board members are attending in person. Marge Masters is attending remotely, and then we have various chairs attending as well. So I will be doing my best to monitor here, my workstation, and hopefully this will cloud out any issues. So first of all, so Dr. Gillespie, Dr. Davis, will you provide us with your comments to start and then turn it over so that we can get ready to go? So the work that we have done in the last few years has positioned us well as a system. Our strategic plan drives our work, and as we consider the last few months, I want to turn it back to Dr. Merlin Toch who facilitated the development of our strategic plan. Just some additional context. But he stated, "School districts where they emerge from this crisis worse or better are strategic, something other." And it depends on what they do now. Those that have an authentic strategic plan, developed by a strategic process, must infuse it with a new creative energy to discover and seize upon the possibilities of a moving crisis. So while he was referring to the pandemic when he wrote this back in April, his words have meaning as we consider it not only the pandemic of the unrest that followed from George Floyd. And as we begin tonight, I want to note that the equity audit that we conducted this past school year was born out of our strategic plan. And given how conversations in our nation have evolved over the last five weeks, depending or exceeding the results of this work, this position us well to develop actionable strategies for the coming year and years to come. So with that, I'll turn things over to Dr. Marcellus Davis and Dr. Allison Gillespie. Dr. Gillespie, we all know well, she's in different roles now, the assistant superintendent of teaching and learning. And Dr. Marcellus Davis is new in our organization as our director of equity and engagement. So over to you.
Thank you. Chair Mellon, members of the board, Dr. Kazmercek, fellow cabinet colleagues. We're here today feeling great importance to have this conversation and proud of the work that we've done and proud that we're situated, that we have so much robust data from our students and community to know where we need to get better. But really, our charge today is to share results from the equity audit and then detail to you where we're already jumping in to some really significant action. And then Dr. Davis and his new role will talk about future plans. So I wanted to start with reminding us about our equity commitments and our four-way equity decision-making protocol. We already are starting our second school year where this has been part of our system. And so I've seen all of us get better at using the equity decision-making protocol as we navigate decisions. But in order for us to be true to our equity commitment, which states to nurture the whole student, we disrupt systemic inequities by recognizing, honoring, and embracing all cultures with humility and respect, we identified and those who created our strategic plan identified that we really needed an authentic way to find out how we were doing in terms of meeting the needs of all of our students, especially our students that we knew prior to the creation of the strategic plan that we had disparity gaps in achievement. And so tonight, we're going to talk about the overview and major findings of the equity audit, talk about how the equity audit is organized, review the data and recommendations, and then we'd like to spend a bulk of our time talking about our commitment to action and our response to the equity audit. And then we see this as a back and forth conversation with you on the school board. So whenever there's comments or questions, feel free to ask. And then at the end, we hope we'll continue to discuss next steps. So we start with this quote, "Violence in black children, is black children going to school for 12 years receiving six years' worth of education?" And centering that quote as we think about, we have disparities in our system. So the equity audit addressed really three questions. What does our current data say about our achievement and the inequities that exist in our district? What factors do staff, students, administration, parents identify as contributing to those inequities? And then what do we do in terms of enhancing all of our, and each of our students' experience so that we help them, all of our students reach their goals, but that our school feels inclusive of every single member of our community in a way that it doesn't right now? The major findings are that we have achievement disparities. Our children of color and children in low socioeconomic areas or that their families qualify for free and reduced lunch achieve statistically below their white peers. We have discipline disparities in the fact that we have more referrals at a disproportionate rate than white peers for our students of color and students in low socioeconomic status. And then we have relationship and communication disparities. Our families and students of color and low-income students and families do not feel connected, heard, or expected to achieve in our district. I pause because that's not who we want to be at all. I know that to the core of who I am and why I continue to stay in White Bear Lake and hope I'm here for a very long time. And so I think it's important to identify for our community that we hear that, that that doesn't sit well with us and that we're committed to changing that. So the equity audit, if you ask me what month it started, I can't tell you anymore because I feel like we had two school years last year. But it was almost done by the time we had to go to distance learning. And we did have one more survey that went out to our families to try to make sure we could get as many people as possible in that first window, and I believe, March. And so we had two different portions that went on. We had quantitative data, which was survey data that was sent to all of our district families, pre-K 12-plus, students in fifth through 12th grade. And the reason fifth graders were decided, we wanted to, our elementary principals and leaders really wanted to include our elementary voice, but we worked with the survey creators and what could, what age would really the survey be appropriate for, that we could get accurate data, and so fifth graders were included. And then our staff was staff across our whole district and administrators across our whole district. The other portion were qualitative focus groups. And so each one of our secondary groups had four different focus groups that were ran at their school. One was 100% white students. One group was mixed-race students, meaning students from all different racial groups, and it could be students who identify themselves as mixed-race or interracial students. And then each administrator got to choose an affinity group in their building. So that meant one group might have been all black students, white one group might have been all Latino students. It really varied across our buildings and what our administrators chose. Sunrise Park, being one of the most diverse secondary schools that we had, had five groups so that they could make sure that they incorporated each one of the racial groups that we have in terms of the majority of our students that fall into those categories and introduce and identify themselves in those racial categories. The ALC also had four groups, but if you noticed, they weren't able to run a couple of them because we went to distance learning. But the researchers felt they had enough data so that they, the trends were statistically significant and they could analyze the data. We also had a group of students, and I hope to have them come visit with you at the board at some time and share their research. They participated in action research while we were in school. And so it was youth participatory action research, which is a really rigorous research project where students run the whole thing. We had two grad students from the University of Minnesota facilitate that. We had a staff member, Robert Anderson, learn about that method, methodology, and how to utilize that with students. And in my whole career, which, you know, I think this is year 20, this is the most authentic way I've ever seen student voice engaged, and it was really a pilot last year. And so the students created a research question around relationships. They were specifically focused at South Campus because the researchers felt like that was the best place to start. And then they did their own focus groups led with students and staff, and so their data was also incorporated into this audit. And Dr. Davis and I will talk about how we're going to continue to have YPAR as part of our district. So now, my colleague, our newest colleague, Dr. Davis, will continue to talk about equity audit.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. First, let me start off by saying I am honored to be a staff here in White Bear Lake area schools. I am honored to serve our community, our students, my peers, and community members. And I want us to think about what we are about to ascend into as far as this data as not condemnation, rather it's realization on how we must enhance our learning opportunities and experiences for all our students so that they can be fulfilled with the promise that our mission and vision of the organization states. Okay? Somehow, my colleague, who I have had many discussions and texts with over the course of two weeks putting this presentation together, gave me the slide with the biggest quotes. So I will make sure that I read that. All right. I think I blew that one. Is that the right quote? Okay. All right. Yes, I got two of them. Thank you, colleague. Students quickly received the message that they can only be smart when they are not who they are. This, in many ways, is classroom colonialism, and it can only be addressed through a very different approach to teaching and learning. All right. So one of the first areas, okay. So tonight, we're going to go over eight focus areas. And these eight focus areas are the epicenter of the data. They go over five or eight different areas, and they were qualitative analysis through focus groups, and there was a quantitative analysis through surveys. And they all have different areas that they address. So the first is accepting marginalizing students' identity and voice. The second is culturally relevant school leadership, teaching, and curriculum. The third is discriminatory behavior and practices. The fourth is school culture and climate. The fifth is school-community relations. And the sixth is thoughts on achievement gaps. And the seventh is thoughts on discipline. And the eighth is teacher rating and expectations. We will go through all eight over the course of my section, and we're going to see it in two ways. We're going to see it and hear about the qualitative analysis as well as we're going to see and hear about the quantitative analysis. All right. This next slide talks about our highest ranking needs of area. So the first three, which we would argue are the most important three, are the thoughts on discipline gap. The second is the thoughts on the achievement gap. The third is accepting or marginalizing student identity and voice. The fourth is school culture and climate. The fifth is expectations and teacher ratings. The sixth is culturally responsive leadership, school leadership, teaching, and curriculum. And the seventh is school-community relationship. And the eighth is discriminatory behaviors and practices. So, and the rank order of what scored the highest on the two, this is what it looks like. All right. Data review and recommendations. So it was very important for Dr. G and myself, sorry, Dr. Gillespie and myself, to make sure that, we didn't want to bring our students in this environment with the COVID-19, so we brought them through pictures, all right? All right. Here it is, Dr. G. Another quote, "A hallmark for me of a culturally relevant teacher is someone who understands that we're operating in a fundamentally inequitable system. They take that as a given, and that teacher's role is not merely to help kids fit into an unfair system, but rather to give them the skills, the knowledge, and the dispositions to change the inequity. The idea is not to get more people at the top of an unfair pyramid. The idea is to say the pyramid is wrong, or the pyramid is the wrong structure. How can we really create a circle, if you will, that includes everybody?" As we go forward, on the coming days, starting today, starting tomorrow, as a district, this is our work going forward. And I would expand the thought of a culturally relevant teacher to culturally relevant leaders. That includes the school board, that includes all of us in leadership, that includes the leadership in the buildings, that includes all of us. How can we be culturally responsive and relevant to our constituents, which are our students? How can we be responsive to their needs? All right. The first area, the qualitative section, accepting or marginalizing student identity and voice. I'm just going to go over one of the bullets. And one of the most important bullets that we extracted from the research was, "Minoritized students do not always feel the racial and ethnic identity of cultural heritage and language are represented within the schools." So I want you to think about that in a very comprehensive way. So the spatial environment, does the spatial environment have the mosaic of our racially and culturally ethnic diversity in our students in our community population? Does our curriculum speak to racially, culturally, ethnically diverse United States? Does our hiring teachers, staff, and administrators look representative of our student demographics? Does that make sense? Yes?
I was just wondering, is there some examples that students gave us?
I'm assuming that they, there could be. I don't want to say that there are for sure or there are not. In the much bigger report that has some questions and has some qualitative answers, but I'm not 100% sure.
I'm just trying to remember the survey. Are these, were these given as they're answering questions, A, B, C, D, how do you feel about this, or was this another end that both was both?
It was both. So the survey asked questions around, I can speak only from, because I took it as an administrator, but similar questions. Do you, do you feel correct that represents all of your students? Do you feel that your teachers understand you? Like those types of questions where students answered strongly agree or strongly disagree. And then questions and themes came out of the qualitative focus groups. And so kids were given a lot of different questions, and with the researchers, they recorded the focus groups and then they coded them and did all really high-level research. This could be published, that's not the purpose of it, but so they then extracted themes. So based on stories that students would tell from them. So I can look on a detailed one, I'm sure there's quotes from the focus group to talk about that. In my experience, what kids would say is that they don't learn about their history in our US history class, that it's very much from one lens, that they don't necessarily need, like we in PE always have had to try to get a dance class going, kids wanting to have a step class, that's part of Black culture. So like, I know from the high school end, I'm always trying to feel like I, as a student, have to bring this to school instead of it's something that school already offers. But I'll look for a direct quote, because it'll be way more hard for me to say.
Now, I'm approaching day eight in my tenure. But I have been able to come across a piece of footage where a graduate African-American young man talks about his experience in the White Bear Lake area schools. And in that qualitative analysis, he talks about Black history and through the curriculum. So does anybody know what I'm talking about, this particular footage?
It was at our Black Excellence Event two years ago. I'm recently pressed with.
Yes. And he spoke about it. So I don't know for sure about this data, but I know that there has been other datas echoing that sentiment from that particular piece that I was able to see. Does that make sense? Did I ask you? Thank you, Dr. G. All right. All right. So the next section is culturally responsive school leadership, teaching, and curriculum. And I'm just going to focus on two bullets, one on the left, which is the qualitative side, and one on the right, that's the quantitative side. So, "Students express doubt in their teachers' abilities to handle issues of race and culture with seriousness and rigor." Having just recently taught in the higher education realm and sector, I know as I taught potential teachers or seeking to be teachers, that their training was very limited around race, power, and privilege as it relates to being educated on that. Does that make sense? So you may be lucky, and I'm stretching it here, if you get one multicultural education course in your teaching, in your teaching training. And if you go on to masters, you'll be up to two, and if you get your doctorate, maybe three. But that's not a very wide range of this education. Does that make sense? So to be able to see this in writing would be consistent with that training, all right? And I will also say this, in my experience as a Minnesotan, all my life, I was, in my home, we talked about race on a daily basis. But I was also instructed that you don't have these conversations outside of here. Does that make sense? So I did not have the skill set to be able to talk about that in public settings. Does that make sense? And I'm just using this as a point of reference for myself because this data makes sense to me in a sense that if one doesn't have the skill set to talk about race, power, and privilege, it's going to be hard to teach about. Does that make sense? All right. And if you, any question? Can I hear something?
This one is the answer for your original question, which was, for the first one, like, specific examples or questions that students were asked. So in that area, in terms of accepting or marginalizing student identity, students asked, were asked a question, some students' identities are more accepted than others in the classroom. Only for the business of staff. But essentially, these are the types of questions they ask students. Are you treated better or worse than students who've been, you know, other students in class? Are you given equal or unequal chance to participate in class? Do you get to contribute to school policy? Do you feel your, and straight, do you feel your identity is acceptable?
And if we go to the right side, which is the quantitative side, the very top bullet, this is the lowest-rated equity area needing serious attention. So when we talk about our recommendations, this is one of the areas that we need to make sure we're paying a lot of attention to. All right. Going to go on to the next. Discriminatory behaviors and practices. And I'm just going to focus on the very top bullet. Discriminatory behaviors were identified as exhibited by the students and teachers and administrators. So actually, I'll go to the last one, too. More than once, respondents stated white students attempting to initiate conflict with students of color in addition to microaggressions, shaming, and encroachment into physical space. Microaggressions are a daily experience for many people of color, and they can come as regular as, can I touch your hair? Why do you wear your hair like that? Why do you wear that regalia or costume to school? Does that make sense? So they're happening on a regular basis in our school district based on the evidence or the data that we received from this research to some of our students. And they've expressed that there is a feeling of discriminatory behavior to minoritize students in our classes, in our schools. All right. I'm going to move on unless there's any questions. I better ask if there's any questions here. School culture and climate. Again, the left is qualitative and the right is quantitative. I wanted to go to the bullet that says, "Many of the students indicated that they had good experiences attending White Bear Lake area schools, but are concerned with the following: racism, racialized, and English language learning bullying, disappointment with lack of racial diversity in staffing." Having been an educator for 20 to 30 years, I have not seen a lot of staff of color in settings. More importantly, or as important, when there are staff of color, it is also important for us to understand what their role is. Far too often, I have seen Black men in particular be used for behavior. So not only is there a need for an increased racial diversity, but there's also a need for a race, increased racial diversity in people and roles. Does that make sense? So we're not as much seen in the classroom people of color, but we may be seen in staff positions, in particular relating to behavior. All right. If you go to the right side, the bullet I want to address is, "Minoritized students and parents feel race plays a significant role in how they're treated. Data interprets they feel the school district climate as being hostile." So we have seen race in a number of these slides, which it becomes a theme. And this theme of two different experiences, one for students of color and one for our white students. As we go throughout this data, this will be a reoccurring theme. School-community relationship. I'm going to focus on the second bullet. Minoritized students cited an adversarial relationship between the school, teachers, staff, administrators, and parents. Again, this theme of a racialized experience coming from students as well as parents towards the school district and some of its staff. If you go to the right side, uh... Parents did not feel invited, or parents did not feel invited in their students' buildings or did not feel that the staff administrators were approachable. Again, there's a different racialized experience here, and we're feeling that the climate is hostile. I'm going to go to the next section if there aren't any questions here. Thoughts on the achievement gap. I'm going to go to that second bullet. White students, teachers, and other staff seem to blame minoritized students for the achievement gap. Other concerns about the achievement gap center around socioeconomic status. So there is this feeling that students of color are their own worst enemy as it relates to education. And the third bullet really accentuates that. All right. Any questions here? All right. The next one is thoughts on the discipline gap.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yes?
So I'm on the World's Best Workforce, and you talked about this, about how the achievement gap, we have turned this up and to the state. But you're, two years ago, how has that changed what we're doing on the whole school of the world? The graduation rates, and that's what they're doing. Do you like your job? Do you have a different perspective? Yeah. So I should have been repeating the question, so I apologize, Steve. The question is, is how does this new data, how's it going to force us to dive deeper into work that the World's Best Workforce has been talking about for a significant time? So being brand new, to me, this data is going to, we're going to dissect it as a World's Best Workforce and look deeper into our goals. Are you going to be getting it? Yeah. And we're hiring a research evaluation and assessment coordinator to help us as we look at data and really have robust conversations around what data and what progress measures are we going to measure and, or look at in terms of defining achievement for our students who graduate from White Bear Lake and then look into that and align it. and then look into that and align it. I purposely, last year, when I wrote our Achievement and Integration Plan, tried to streamline it more based on research, on on strategies that we can do. So it'll be work that we do for sure in this very first part of this school year.
And that positions, and you just mentioned, is that a replacement for the brand one? The thought of the position, the position...
Oh, okay.
It's held up until it occurred, so that we can trigger it developing the job description for the national...
We also, um, have a district-wide equity team that we started last year, and those leaders will be key partners for us as we look at that and how can we pull from that committee and have representatives work with us on World's Best Workforce as well.
The next slide goes over the discipline gap. And I wanna focus on the left side, the second bullet. Students of color are often oversurveillance and reported feeling subjected to racialized bullying. Um, and I'm assuming that, uh, the surveillance is not only coming from, um, the deans, but it's also perhaps coming from teachers and other people within the building that are staff, nonlicensed or licensed. Right? And if you look over to the right side and the quantitative side, "District employees feel this is something they are responsible for and that they can address." So, um, there is, um, a concern by the employees that they are, um, helping uphold this reality, but are aware of it and wanna do something about it. Right? Any questions?
I think it's a real whole part of the study. There's a couple of great holes. Absolutely, we can grab onto a lot of work that this top things that might allow us to normalize and spread it.
Absolutely, I appreciate that. Uh, Dr. Kasmercheck, I I wanna come back to the point that I started off. This is not about a condemnation. We don't have time. The sense of urgency is upon us, and our students cannot be compromised. This is about realization so that our practice can get informed and can get enhanced so that our students can get the promise, what we said we were gonna give them. And that's the best quality education that White Bear Lake area schools can provide. All right? Expectations and teacher ratings is the next section, and I'll start, I only got one bullet on the left. So, uh, "Participants perceive different expectations for students based on race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status and academic status." Right? To the right, uh, the second bullet in particular, uh, or actually, the first two go together. Minoritized students and parents believe that teachers do not have high expectations for minoritized students. And then the la- the second bullet says, "The data indicates that this is true." All right?
Which data? Which data?
So that would be the survey data, so they asked specifically for staff, but, I'm sorry. The question is, which data indicated that? So the survey data, they asked staff and administrators, um, specific questions on how high of that, um, expectations do you hold for certain groups of students? And so the, uh, data from that concrete, all, uh, quantitative data stated that they have whole layer, our lower expectations for students of color.
That specific question, did you, did that particularly come out?
No, not that, I don't know if it was boarded exactly like that, but it for sure asked us as administrators and staff, all different things about your interactions with students and expectations, and they were able to statistically, research-based, pull out and say that 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 is true. Now, do, uh, do, my, in my experience, do I believe there's a conscious knowledge of that? I don't. What comes out, it's, actually, there's tons of research, and I wanna do some more professional development with our staff and our leaders on it. It's called the racism of low expectations. People out of the goodness of their heart are overcompensating for what they believe, whether, because they don't understand, they think life is so different, they're trying to overhelp and do all this stuff, and they don't hope kids have the same expectations. But it's not like, it's not overt, it's those microaggressions, and it's, it's, it's a bias they have that they haven't yet unpacked or even know that they have.
And what comes of that is that this student has to go on to the next grade level and is ill-prepared. And then it continues to vertically get worse and worse. Does that make sense? Thank you for the...
Thank you. I would just add, I'm age twenty-seven, and the White Bear, in the South Campus, part of the Latin students, there was a student who specifically stated that a teacher told them they weren't late in the honors class. And when they said, wow, he said, well, and everyone else in the class was like, oh, that's... Had a whole bit of that. But a good example of all of that discussion.
Thank you for that, Board Member Thompson. I'm gonna take this back off. Feels good, I'm happy to tell you about that. All right, so recommendations that, uh, come from the study. Um, and I I wanna be, uh, very clear here that thoughts on the achievement gap and thoughts on the discipline gap are are high, are are, they are our highest rated top two. But you will not find them in the recommendations, and here's a rationale why. It is believed that addressing these five will ultimately have intersectionality and have a relationship with those two, curtailing those realities. Does that make sense? So that our focus on this will address those two. Okay? So our top five here for recommend...
Thing is, we're talking about these two, what, um, Dr. Davis just talked about in terms of thoughts on this achievement gap and thoughts on discipline gap. I just wanna underline what Dr. Kasmercheck said earlier, that, um, that ours staff have the willingness to learn how and understand that they are part of the solution. And I, it's highlighted in here, this, this is a significant finding because research suggests that the capacity and willingness to change are some of the most necessary aspects for equity reforms. So they want to be, to be part of the solution, they understand they have power in that solution. It's our job to help build capacity and then have these these conversations. But I think that's super important, because when I met with Dr. Khalifa, he he led with that, um, this is gonna be really hard for all of you to realize and not, sometimes people get really stuck and and just can't even fathom that this is actual reality with the data. But he's like, hold on to that people do have a belief that they can do this, and as you move forward, we can do this, we have to lean into it, and it's gonna be hard, but we have people who are willing to do that, which, that that doesn't always come out in districts that they work with.
So the five that we're gonna focus on as a district going forward are accepting or marginalizing student identity and voice, closely responsive school leadership and curriculum, school community relationships, school culture and climate, expectations and teacher ratings. And for the remainder of this presentation, we're gonna go over some quantitative data, but we're also going to really talk about some of the things that we're currently doing and practices that we're currently in as it relates to these top five. Does that make sense?
Highlight what we're doing.
Cool? Yeah, 'cause I mean, I've been up here now. Yes, we're, we're, we're negotiating, um, the quantitative data is very similar to the qualitative data. Um, if you all are okay, we can get to what we're doing based on the data, if you are all okay with that?
So, 'cause this next part, so the, the Equity Audit gave us a ton of suggestions on what we can do to move forward. And what we really wanna talk about, um, is where we've been as a district, how we laid the foundation, and then stuff that is happening right now, and then Dr. Davis's plan moving forward. Um, and then questions like, um, Deb Floyd asked was, is awesome, like, help us think, how are we gonna use this data, this robust hundred-and-forty-three-page report to continue to unpack it and in influence other things like World's Best Workforce? Or our teacher evaluation system, or how do we, um, Matt Mon's HR director has done tons of work on trying to recruit more diverse candidates. Is there more that we can even do? So it's, this is like the launching point, you're the first ones we're talking to, rightfully so, and then how do we use it to influence our system?
We have it, yeah. It was such a...
So I just, I just wanted to make it quick, a a quick point into how we're gonna utilize this. One of the things that we're going to do is we're going to, one, we're gonna put this up online, is that correct? I don't know. The summer report will be shared to the people, to the community. We're also going, uh, Dr. Gillespie and I, and we may develop a team, um, to, uh, go down to the school building level and do this presentation for them as well so that we can have that dialogue, so they can, uh, ask questions about the data, just so that everyone is informed, not only informed, but informed with some, with some questions from, um, those that were paramount to making sure the Equity Audit came to fruition. Does that make sense?
So as we think about where we've been, and Dr. Kasmercheck referenced this, our district strategic plan, and people did work before strategic plan, that's most recent strategic plan, for years. And we have a robust history of tons of equity champions trying to impact, um, the achievement gaps that we've known we've had, concerns about student-staff relationships. But what really has been different for me in my professional career and just being a part of our team is we grounded in this strategic plan that's unique. So many community members helped us, um, create it, it continues, it has branches in all of our different buildings. And so how we move forward really is, we were given a charge by the community, and it it's reassuring to know that there's such a commitment towards equity.
And I have, I have to go back and review the numbers that I think we were out with twelve hundred people were involved in the district strategic plan, all the action teams, and all of this. We got building plans, we got over, certainly well over a thousand, I think, was approaching.
So Dr. Kasmercheck reiterated that we've had over, um, twelve hundred people participate in that process through multiple different committees and really, um, our buildings and getting to influence the direction of our district. And equity came out as strategy five and throughout our district strategic plan. But I know, because it was my job last year, it's in every single building plan as well. Um, and it's a true focus of our, um, community, and, you know, we've underlined that earlier with some of the research that came out. Um, our equity commitment and equity decision-making protocol, the board's support on that, and that we have that at the forefront, that also was a collaborative process where a group of thirty, just like the district strategic, um, planning team, came together and created those and adopted those and presented those. They continue to get, we get better and better using them, we still have a long way to go. Um, but a, a team of leaders are going to train our instructional coaches and cabinet on how to use that equity decision-making protocol and continue to build, train the trainers so that people get really good at knowing, I understand that we have this, but what does that mean when I'm making really big decisions?
So the Equity Decision Making Protocol, I know that it interfered on our diets, but we get access to some of that training as well?
Yeah.
Because I would really like to make sure that I have that at the front of my mind when I'm making this.
Yeah, we would love to do that, and, um, that's one of the things we wanted to talk to you about. We see ourselves bringing at least quarterly updates to you, but if there's, um, now, we've, we've really, we're quite skilled in giving synchronous and asynchronous opportunities, and so you could watch it. And then it's actually a couple of our cultural liaison, our senior teacher, our meeting president, they're training the trainer, and we have, they have a whole protocol that they develop. I'm really excited about, so, yeah, we definitely... So then, the hiring of Dr. Davis is a huge, exciting step for us. Um, having Dr. Kasmercheck last year, one of my projects was to make sure that we hired a director of equity, but it was, we positioned it in our system so that this position and the person who held this position had genuine influence over our system. And that is also unique to other districts. Um, sometimes this position is, is someone as part of a teaching and learning team, but doesn't hold a cabinet-level position, and that, that speaks to our commitment. Um, we're super excited to have him as part of our team.
I'm ecstatic to be here, by the way.
We, um, I started with, I, I think some of the leaders on that, at the District Equity and Achievement Team, have been champions since about fifteen years at least, they have a history, and they've been committed, and they're, they're definitely staying in White Bear, um, for the rest of their career. And so we have, I think it's thirty-five people who are on that team, and it represents every single building, administrators, um, teachers that are really committed to supporting the work in our district. We have an active and strong American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. Yep.
So with our American Indian, uh, committee, uh, parent committee, it is important that, our numbers suggest that our native students are less than one percent. But I was at a conference, a Native American Indian Education Conference once, and, um, there was a chairwoman, I'm not quite sure, um, where she was from, and I believe her last name was Chairwoman, uh, Velsner, but she said this to the group. She said, "I am sick and tired of hearing that native students, uh, population, or, 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 or population in a school is significantly insignificant." Meaning we cannot gather their information because, um, the, the, the statistic, uh, the statistics without who they are. And the feeling of being invisible was what she was really expressing. So, um, I say this to say that every time you see me, I'm going to make sure, um, that I mention our native students, because with being less than one percent, sometimes the conversation does not include them. Does that make sense?
Well, one percent would be approximately a hundred students.
Yep.
So we certainly aren't going to deny what a hundred students need.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Kasmercheck. Yep, no problem.
Dr. Kasmercheck reiterated that one percent would be a hundred students, and that we're not going to leave behind one hundred students. Sorry, this reiteration, we're, we're making it work. I feel it's funny, the people listening are thinking this too, and since they're pretending she speaks for Dr. Kasmercheck. I am not, I am free.
Dr. Gillespie, you are doing a great job, 'cause I tapped out.
Steve is like, giving me like signals, okay, got it, yeah. Um, and then work that we haven't yet been able to share, but was done before we had to go on distance learning, is an equitable family engagement framework and tool. Brianna Santes-Cloy, our district Latino and Latina cultural liaison, was huge. Timar Coled, the, again, a stakeholder committee that created a tool that is going to be transformational. All of our principals will use it. We have a working group right now figuring out how can we use that to guide us as we embark on another school year with, um, however, whatever model we have, how do we make sure we have authentic family and student engagement? And so all of this was started while we were doing this audit. And so I think it's important to know we were, again, we are in a situation where we have a lot of data to strategically and really truly make differences for our community moving forward, and in perhaps some of the most difficult times in our history, that's at least for sure in my lifetime of what we're, um, going through, so.
And I, I just wanted to add that these things are consistent with the five recommendations as well. So we were already in practice for what the five recommendations were. Question?
Speaking of the cultural liaisons, who are they gonna report to go forward? Uh, Dr. Davis, or to you, or to serious?
We're gonna fight over them, no.
Let me reiterate the question before Steve gives us the, the baseball signal.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, the question was, uh, as it relates to the cultural liaisons, who will they report to?
They will report to Dr. Davis. I will remain very close, 'cause I value them, and that was among the favorite things of my job last year, is getting to work with them, but they report directly to Dr. Davis.
And I wanna say that, uh, the liaisons and myself, they are very, very, uh, thankful for the opportunity to be led by Dr. Gillespie, and so that relationship will be...
I don't give people up very easily, but I share it well. So then, under each area, we wanna highlight some things that are happening right now. Um, knowing that, like I said, we have a plan moving forward, or Marcela's is a really exciting plan. So as we think about how to amplify and continue thinking about how students truly see themselves in school and that their identities are accepted and and celebrated, um, we, I wanted to talk more about that Y-PAR. So part of, we are going to strengthen the opportunities for students in our system to participate in youth participatory action research. Robert Anderson, who did training last year with the graduate students, did it as an extra add-on, um, that I was really thankful that he took. But it will be part of his assignment now, so he has part of his FTE and, um, dedicated to leading Y-PAR projects throughout the district. And so that will be really exciting, because, um, students will, they lead that process, and then our commitment, and they, they talk to Dr. Kasmercheck, they talk with me, they'll talk with the building principal, is that when they give you data, that you will change things, that it's just not about an exercise in experiencing some really rigorous research. And so we're excited about that, we're looking at opportunities for concurrent enrollment or, um, college credit alignment to really honor the experience, which I'm hoping to bring to you as we look at course proposals for the upcoming school year. But, um, some really exciting ways to authentically have student voice in our system in a way that, like I said before, I've never experienced. And they've presented now probably four different times to different groups about their research, and it's profound in terms of what they identify for us to enhance. So that is one, um, big thing that we're excited about.
So at the top, it says racial, cultural, ethnic student groups, and research suggests that students... that students with a very strong, sound racial, cultural, ethnic identity perform better in school. As you think about our equity commitment, it talks about nurturing the whole child. The student development theories and racial identity development theories are often talked about in higher education, not so much in public education. What we are trying to do is mix the both. So that one's white identity development, one can understand where they're at in the process of developing as a white person, or a black person, or a native person. So really incorporating curriculum that addresses this development. Does that make sense?
And an underlying theme is, I will pull together a task force to examine discipline. We've talked for a couple of years examining that policy, what that looks like, but really looking at how do we enhance and look at ways that students are able to report issues of, especially the racialized bullying that's referenced in this. As we all know, that's horrific to hear, and we need to examine that. So that will happen. And that applies to many different areas as we look at closing the disparity gaps that exist there and seeing what we can do to enhance practices around that.
I have a question.
Yeah, of course.
Or will that include the staff as well? I mean, there were some pretty horrible things that the students said in there.
Yeah, the question is, is will staff be included as we look at discipline? Absolutely. And so it is a continuum of how to, how to teachers have strategies of positively engaging students in class. How do our administrators respond if and when an issue comes? And then how does our policy guide that? And it, you know, to me, it's complex and it all impacts it. So yeah, definitely. We do have schools that are working on, there's, we mentioned it throughout, there's a program called Innocent Classroom, which really talks about helping students come to school and be their true selves and being accepted at school. We have now four schools that have started implementing that. And that's, Richfield, St. Paul have implemented it district-wide and the impact it has on student relationships and feeling a part of school. But absolutely, yep. Thank you.
So the next section is cultural response to school leadership and curriculum. And if you can remember back earlier in the qualitative section, it really talked about students of color not seeing themselves in the literature and in the curriculum. What you're seeing is currently, there are some that are working right now on a ethnic studies professional development series, actually starts next week. It's going to be going on for the next month. There are also some efforts to design some US history ethnic studies courses that will be proposed this year, with implementation potentially next year.
So as part of the course proposal process, we, all of our US history teachers are engaging in professional development with Clever Ortiz. He's a professor from MCTC, I believe, Minneapolis Community Technical College. And really, it's a, they started, and it will go all year in terms of teaching teachers about how to enhance the curriculum, but also the strategies to come along with that. And instead of having a separate course, my charge right now, which I'll work with a committee, is that I want to have an updated course proposal for you for a US history course. That's our US history course. I don't know, I can't quite figure out as we enhance a curriculum why we would have separate classes when we're talking about giving our students a robust experience of understanding our, you know, United States history and its impact on multiple groups. So it's very much an infancy. I too have only been on this job eight days. So we'll see how that will be. But I know course proposals come up really fast. So.
And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment about that. First of all, I'm really excited to speak for the anti-racist stuff. I'm so glad that we're using that term. And sorry, I was confused on that. My question and comment is, why are we looking at K-12 science, but only US history, which comes in secondary? Because I would argue that students learn at a very young age to think of Native Americans as a historical people. And they learn at a very young age that the symbols of the country and civic ideals are embedded in these white male presidents. And so if students are learning that, by the time they get to US history in second grade, they've already built up this understanding of what is history, what is not. So if we're looking at K-12 science, I'm so excited for US history, but I really think that K-12 social studies, students, you know, they need to learn in kindergarten, these ideas before they get to middle school.
Yep, I agree. So part of it is.
Repeat the question.
Oh, thank you.
So I'm going to try to make it concise, just make, just make sure I've captured your essence. The question is, why are we looking at science changing the science curriculum as it relates to anti-racism?
Just why is it K-12 science under examining and handling the curriculum, but we're looking at US history as a specific course? Then students get social studies and they get these racist ideas from a very early age.
Gotcha.
Why, we will, this is a starting point. K-12 science is on there because K-12 science is in curriculum implementation and part of the curriculum review cycle. So we're, that we're making sure what we do right now, social studies, we're reviewing that whole process as well. We try to coincide it with standards review. And so, but that also is, as we know, can sometimes seem like many years, and we don't have many years. So these are the two areas that we're starting with. US history was supposed to already be started. We have a petition from students who want, who wanted to change the curriculum. We would have already been participating in this PD, but then we had to go to distance learning. So these are starting points. By no means are they the ending points. And I agree 100% with you. We have to look at K-12, every single K-12 area.
And just a point of clarification, the ethnic studies PD actually started last week, but anti-racist professional development starts next week with, with, with our teachers from our district. Yes.
In terms of the restorative practices that we, have we worked or looked at Nancy Reistemberg?
Reese and Burke, yeah.
When she was at the forefront of this, was that someone that we use as an ally that we talk to or we look into her, the information she's given?
That's the person we state.
Yep. Yeah. So the question was around restorative justice, if we've worked with Nancy Reese and Burke as a local expert, and if we've partnered with her. I'm not quite sure at the district level, we have restorative justice. And Nancy provides lots of training. I have worked with her personally and went to her training many years. So she is someone that, we work closely with Equity Alliance Minnesota around it, but Nancy has influenced really all of the restorative justice that you see in schools. For sure. She's a great resource. And actually, in the audit, it suggested working with our indigenous community too, as we look at restorative justice and making sure we're implementing it with fidelity and honoring cultural norms. So we have, a lot of schools have implemented it. I know at Norm, it was increasing. Sunrise Park has a significant. So we have a good foundation, but absolutely.
I'd just like to ask one question. This is Marge Newmasters speaking from.
Yes.
From the world out here.
Hello, hello, board chair member Marge. I, I was a little taken back.
My voice came from on high, maybe. I just want to very briefly say, because I don't want to take up much time with all your good presentation here. The data is fascinating. From my perspective of having been in the district close to 50 years, and being a mom of a kid of color who's now an activist adult, working in anti-racism and doing a mix of things, I am encouraged that we're finally going beyond the one day. I always cringe when we hear celebrate, because we get this, the day. Okay, this is this day. And we look like we're going to actually take action and really do things that make a difference. So I'm really encouraged by this movement, by your new position, by all the people working in this. And I think the importance of our student voices and the parents, but the kids that are in it, that are living the microaggressions and all the things that happen all day long. If everyone is aware of our life in our school, it can be better. And the kids can see themselves proudly. So I'm really encouraged. We're really going to do something this time. Thank you.
Thank you, board member. Marge?
Marge, yep.
Yes. Okay, okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure I got it right.
You did.
Thank you. I want us to be encouraged, like you said, I agree 100%. There will never be another opportunity in my lifetime that we have the opportunity to radically shift education like we have now. And I know that it's very tough, tough, tough on all of us. But this is an opportunity to transform the way we deliver education for our students. And I take that with great, I'm honored by that, and I'm humbled by that. And I take that with great commitment and passion and a sense of urgency. Right?
I wanted to highlight that anti-racist professional development is new. And at the end, when the murder of George Floyd happened, Marcellus and I pulled together our district equity and achievement team, and they really felt compelled that we need to continue learning throughout the summer. And so Marcellus, amazing teacher leaders, administrators put together a professional development that will engage our whole district staff. And before this meeting, I just checked, we had 61 people sign up already for it. That's in July. It's, they're not getting compensated for it. And the reasons people are there, they all are introducing themselves, it's really about getting better and being able to impact. So I think, and it's not solely teachers, there's classified personnel, our administrators. And so I have no doubt that that number will rise, but that's really exciting. And that team, it's really awesome what they put together. I look forward to.
I'm real proud of it.
Yeah. Sure. Yeah. We'll email you. And the, it's, you do the learning on your own, and then they have three opportunities to participate in discussions. They're, you know, virtual discussions. And you don't have to, you can, you can do the learning. And the majority of people are participating in the discussions too. I checked, and almost every single time has at least close to 50 people participate. So pretty exciting.
Make sure you have. And I just focus on the last bullet. Equity Alliance Minnesota provides professional development. We've had a relationship with them probably around eight to 10 years. They are, we are part of their consortium. And they used to be E-Mid, for those that may not be familiar. And as they are ramping up, they are taking feedback from the consortium members on what type of professional developments need to be offered to enhance anti-racism professional development, to enhance culturally relevant and responsive pedagogy. So our relationship with them is going to be suggested in numerous slides, but it's going to be a relationship that will help provide us with additional professional development opportunities for our entire school district. School-community relationship.
So as we work to enhance our school-community relationships, I referenced the equitable family engagement framework and tool that stakeholder committee created. And really, Marcellus and our amazing cultural liaison team will continue to lead that work for us. But I will incorporate a goal for our schools and their yearly action plans around how they're going to increase family engagement. It's something our leaders have focused on and want to do. We know that we have opportunities there. And so this tool is hugely helpful and has already had, I gave it to them ahead of time, for those who wanted to look, a lot of positive feedback on the help that it will have. So that is something new in our system, something that we had planned before everything happened, but something that we know will have, we have even more data to enhance the urgency around making sure that we enhance and get better true relationships with our community, each member of our community, including and especially our community of color that we haven't yet connected with.
So this is the popcorn section of our presentation. So areas may go longer than normal. And I'm thinking about, in my interview, Matt Bonds told me, we've got 20 questions and you're on question three. And you've got 30 minutes left.
He had to tell me the same thing in my interview. Elsie, you have five more minutes. You have seven questions.
So bear, so bear with us.
No, I'm watching the time. I'm going to speed this up a couple of minutes.
I just wanted to say that Jennifer Babish is right now currently looking over the last five to eight years of all our equity initiatives and creating a logic model that lists all our practices, so that we're kind of having them streamlined and making sure that they're in alignment with the strategic plan. Does that make sense? So that it doesn't feel like they're isolated attempts or one-shot-off equity attempts. No, we're aligning them all together and seeing how proficient and seeing how they are working in our, our school district. And then making the decisions going forward, is this still what we need to be doing right now? Does that make sense?
School culture and climate, or you want to talk about?
No, no, no. So we have had a relationship with Many Faces in the past, and through our relationship with our community, our director of community education, Tim Mauer, that relationship is still in, is still in practice. I believe we have a meeting Monday. So we are trying to reconnect on a different level and continue working in relationship with some of the things that they're doing in the community. And our goal as it relates not only to the equity audit, we had already planned to get even more immersed in community organizations that are really trying to set the stage for racial, cultural, ethnic connections for our community, to elevate our effectiveness as a community and embrace, you know.
So when I think about, when we think about school culture and climate, a lot of, maybe a lot, I don't know how many we have, but quite a few significant policies exist that your influence is huge in as school board members. And one, big one is student discipline. And so this school year, in the beginning of the school year, as I mentioned, we're pulling together a task force to look at discipline in general. I see that as also examining our policy and working with the policy committee on what that might look like. And Dr. Kasmercheck, we also have two policies that our students are doing research on because they learned from other districts. And I don't know enough yet to know if we have something that's similar or what this would look like. But one is a policy around equity and inclusion, and the other one is around hate speech and making sure that it's clear in our system that we won't accept it, tolerate it, and that it's, it's, it would get a consequence if something were to happen. Forest Lake has a similar policy. I'd never heard of that. And so our students went to a conference with them, the students who were leaders of that, and our cultural liaisons are working with those students. But I thought it was a great opportunity for the students to do some work, learn about policy, bring it to the policy committee, however that might look. And then those policies will help continue to reinforce the work and decisions that our leaders are making in our school and give them even more confidence when they're making courageous decisions on behalf of all of our students. The other thing, and you know, we've been engaged in this in a while, but examining our practices that contribute to inequities. So grading, we're all attending a grading for equity conference, a leadership team next week, looking at what will grading look like for us next year, what will it look like in the, in the future. Dress code, we did significant work on that as a board, and that's very helpful. But how do we examine then the practice of implementing that? Is that consistent across our district? So that dress code is accepting and students can come to school as themselves? Again, student discipline. So we have the policy, but what's the practice? And I will say, as someone who was in buildings for 17 years, I grew a lot. I was pretty know-nonsense and have a suspension rate that I am not proud of. So I know the work that we have to do, and that was not at North, that is prior time. But I know our leaders are committed to it. And so we will lean into that together. And then working with Matt Bonds around continuing to look at our staff hiring protocol, so that we can continue to aggressively seek high-quality candidates of color and influence that it works to give our staff, which is a value for all of us.
As well as retain them.
Yes.
I'm going to get my basket.
So the question was around, how has that been going? I'd say we saw some fairly significant improvement coming into the 1920s school year. Coming into 2021, we continued to gain some ground, but not as much ground as we would like. For me, the strategy that I've always find works the absolute best is to go to candidates. And that's been incredibly hard right now. And so I've not found that passively waiting for the candidates you want there that are highly sought after, and there's a really competitive field for, because there's just not that many candidates of color that are out there, frankly. And so I found that we really need to go to them, be really aggressive, be really welcoming, talk about the opportunity that we have available in White Bear Lake. And that's been extremely difficult to do. So at the same time, we've been working really hard at it. So we've been saying, where people can have authentic conversations with friends about their experiences as staff of color in White Bear Lake, we hope that they're having those conversations so that we do see staff in our pools. You know, we're still being as aggressive as we can. You know, we're still being as aggressive as we can in pursuing those opportunities. And, you know, we spare no expense to make that a reality. And we're trying to continue to break down any kind of barriers or challenges that we're seeing in our system there. So we have not achieved perfection, we do not mirror our student population at this point. But we're working on it. And I think we've got an administrative team making hiring decisions that's passionate about making that happen for students. Ken?
What is our presenting roughly of futures of color?
Boy, I'd have to see, I would only misspeak if I broke that down right now. And I'm used to looking at it by category as opposed to in an aggregate like that. So I would only misspeak if I attempted that. But that is absolutely information that I can easily get to you.
It's also a great opportunity in looking forward to our education pathway. How can we take that opportunity and demonstrate to our students of color this is a place that you belong, is in education?
Absolutely. And Roosevelt has a really interesting course on how they attack them and do attract students of color in their school. And so we have teachers who already expressed interest and will be in that. I had some conversations with kids that was not successful convincing them, but I'm not giving them, they're just entering college, so, but yeah.
That's the other thing that I would say is good. In addition to making sure that you're being proactive, going to candidates, it's simply by offering programming that's going to be attractive to candidates. You know, where you have immersion programming, culture responsive programming, where you're listening to all of your students about what they're looking for in terms of course offerings, then you also see a different pool of candidates when you're offering that kind of programming within the system.
So my comments are going to be similar to Matt's. I think there's the overt recruiting. And then there's decisions to make as a system to try and change a system that become attractive to candidates of color. And I think the work that's been going on and the work going forward as we focus going forward, we're going to become more and more, but we hope, a destination for candidates of color. So it's going to make that recruitment, we'll still be aggressive, but the recruitment is going to be, I mean, it's authentic now, but it's going to be even more so as we move forward, as we start to see improvements. So anyway, just reiterating what Matt just said, so.
The other thing that's really important, obviously, is retention. And so Matt and I and Tiffany Dietrich, our teachers union president, are partnering, you know, what types of affinity groups can we offer, support, making sure if and when something happens where our teachers and professionals and staff of color don't feel supported or have something happen, that they have a clear path to both of us administration that can fix it. And so Equity Alliance Minnesota was a great partner. And Tiffany has really done some really awesome thinking around how to set up some structures for that. So some successes, some areas of growth that we have. But that was a conversation that we had this year, and I know it's continuing to be a focus. So Marcellus, I told him we get one more thing, we could go on days. So you picked the last thing.
Okay. So going forward, the Equity Audit Report suggests that we have some type of semblance of an equity plan. Currently, we do not have an equity plan, we do have an equity commitment. So one of the things that we are discussing right now and have been given the go-ahead, the green light by Dr. Kasniczek, is to put together a team to help create a three- to five-year equity plan. And through our relationship and working with Equity Alliance of Minnesota, they're going to facilitate that process.
Marcellus? Did you talk about your achievement integration plan?
Yes.
What that is and how it fits in our system? And that, when you were talking about this, I was, I didn't stay with thinking, well, that's sort of our plan, isn't it? Well, it's not a plan. So I think you should clarify it because board members might be wondering, well, what is that plan?
Good point. So the achievement and integration plan is something that we have to turn into Minnesota state statute to make sure that we are trying to create purposeful integration into our schools. That is a plan that focuses on academic strategies, college career readiness, and is very coupled nicely with the World's Best Workforce Plan. That is something we have to give to the state, and they give us some funding for that. But that is not, in fact, an equity plan. It doesn't speak to multiple different sectors in the school district that can move the work of equity. So we are looking back, and I would argue that many of districts are probably in the belief that that can suffice as an equity plan. But under the leadership of Dr. Kasniczek, he's like, no, they are two separate, isolated plans. And we need one that says equity is the overarching plan that has achievement and integration nestled in it, and all of it's connected to strategic plan. So we're going to put together a cross-pollination of different groups, individuals, students, parents, school board members, to help create this equity plan that takes us the next three to five years with monitoring mechanisms to see our growth as it relates to equity initiatives in our district. I've got seventeen more slides. And it is five-thirty. No, no, it's five o'clock. Tim? If there are no more questions, I'm going to unfortunately put this mask back on, but it's fortunate for safety purposes. Get some water because it's hot up here. Right? Yes?
I just have one comment, and I know you're specifically focused on this. But it would seem to me that this kind of work for the specifically addressed the communal things with the cultural differences between the schools, the things you apply to our special education, through these things.
I missed the last word.
Special education.
Do they also tend to be one of all these programs?
Yes, yep. Special education, you know, I believe probably come out within the document. I know that it's listed in what we presented tonight, ELL, but I'm assuming special education. Because they talk about over-representation of students of color in different groups, expulsions, suspensions, and special education problems.
Yeah, that's for sure. So if we look at all of those areas, we will find inequity, and they were listed in there as well. But, you know, looking at discipline means we also look at what's disproportionate in discipline for special educations. Thank you.
Well, you don't have seventeen more slides.
Wait, you don't care if it's tipped or we adjusted?
So we're at the point where, you know, if there's any additional discussion, that will be now.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Yep.
No, we got a question.
Okay. You're over here. So I, did I shoot back out there? Oh, there's some microphone adjustments.
You want me to stop sharing my screen too, right?
Well, you can see about half of the room, or a third.
So I love that, let me pick up. I got a feedback that will give me feedback on that. Okay. So one of the things I wanted to ask the board is, or make a recommendation. So this was just an opportunity to learn what we learned in the audit and think about next steps. And I think there'd be a lot of power in we're actually taking action because this work is difficult. And it's important that the school board is supporting the work. So at the board meeting, we would like to present this in a way that is actionable for the school board, seeing money, seeing support for that idea. So we'll lightly affirm the work that we've done. And I think, you know, honestly, I think it might be okay to take a moment and give ourselves a gathering back, because that's really the work the last three years. But we know that we forward, it's about the action. As I think Marge put it perfectly, you could have summed up the meeting today, Marge, of your comments, that finally we're at a point, and for those who have been in the organization a long time, where the action steps we're going to take will truly have an impact on our system. And it would be very, very helpful for all of us moving forward that the board is actually taking action in support of that work. And I have no doubt that you can do that, and I think that's an important step along the way. You've been supportive of, you were supportive of going out in the Equity Audit, you've been supportive of the commitment statement, and supportive of decision-making protocol, and all those things. And I know you want to be part of the solution. And so I think this is how you, you're asking, I ordered emails about opportunities already, I've already sent you the messages. And I, so that I can sense, or I can sense a real desire to be leaders from the school board members as well. So I would suggest that if you're, Monday, if we're able to pull that together by Monday, but maybe more likely not first August, board meeting, and do take action on whatever format this is up to. So. So you're thought in around taking action over the work that was done and then about building a plan, a three-to-five-year plan, is you're really? Yep. Like affirm the work we've done.
Yep.
We'll zip this down to, you know, probably like a page or two that maps out as we go forward, and the board would be supportive of that and take action on it for that when the work gets, you know, upwards difficulty. And your support would be incredibly helpful as we embark on this term.
I went to an equity conference in January, the National School Board Association, and I was floored by the number of people, other states, that I talked to that they can't even use the word equity in school board discussions. And maybe I shouldn't have been surprised by that. So I feel like we can't afford to not use something. And I feel really confident and encouraged that this board will be supportive. You couldn't use the word equity? People didn't even, on those boards, didn't even want to say the word equity because people, other people on the board would get mad if they were just talking about it. And it wasn't even up for discussion. And I was just completely flabbergasted by that. But that's not how, that's not the way.
No, I have a question. Then you would bring it forth as a discussion item, and then we would just take action off of work? Yeah, I think so. So we, like, let's just say, I don't know, August nineteenth, what are the meetings?
Thirteen.
What is it?
Thirteen.
August thirteenth. So we'd have a discussion item, and we'd probably recap this presentation succinctly, and then move into an action item that would support the work moving forward. I think that's an important part. Somethin'?
Hi, so that's regularly meeting, the August tenth.
Tenth.
So I will hear that, we're on vacation, happy. So I'll just, but I would definitely be supportive.
Yeah. Is there some work that, could we get something together by July? I mean. By July? By Friday?
It's Monday.
Could we go back? We could recap. If you would give us the benefit of waiting, have a Monday. First Friday, if we could have Friday and weekend and Monday to get ready, put this together in a format that would be presentable, absolutely. I mean, I understand there's a lot going on, and just trying to make sure that that way you have full support of the board, right, as however this thing moves. We'd love to do it on Monday. I think that would teach you why. Very good. Sorry.
No, I agree, don't worry.
No, it's not at all, I appreciate that.
I actually, I support that.
Yeah, it's not. Yeah, no, thank you.
Other comments, questions? Who's Lloyd?
Oh, I just want to say, I was really glad that this is something that the body of law should have. Because I thought it none.
Yeah.
I'm an older person, so I love the politics. I'd love to see the public as warm, as, and just going along. Taking the steps forward, having some sort of path to address this, opposed to just give the services. We've worked on everything.
Yeah, and, you know, I certainly have the last word, and I just, I didn't, maybe didn't give the context. I should have, Dr. Cook's comments about where is, where is, or becoming, maybe not there yet, but we're becoming a strategic system. And so everything that went on with COVID-19 and everything that went on in the last five weeks after George Floyd's killing, we are in a position where we don't necessarily have to react with, we have to carry out the plan that we've developed. We have a very strategic plan, very much a strategic, strategic plan that was developed by our community. We need to, you know, our charge is to carry that out. And we're fortunate that the strategic plan is aligned to what's going on in the world right now. And so we don't necessarily have to react as much as we have to implement what we've already committed to. And what's been going on in the world will actually help accelerate the implementation, I think. So we are positioned really well. And we don't have to come out with just a statement of some sorts. We actually are ready to commit to action right now. So we're just in a, I think, a really unique spot. So we were.
Just one last question. And we're talking about aging, the families of our minor duties. What's the plan to mobilize the families of our white students to be involved and to be part of this or supportive of this?
Yeah.
And how are you going to do that, and teach them the same things as the world?
Absolutely. And that's a critical part and one that can't be overstated, that our, we have many, many people reaching out to us, wanting to be part of a solution, community events that we partner with. And so I have, you know, in one of our action, suggested action steps, which made sense to me as we work with that stakeholder committee, is about having community conversations. And that's across racial, you know, groups and making sure people talk together because really truly making an impact. It is a community problem and a community issue for us to solve. I know White Bear Lake has a lot of confidence in our schools, and I also believe that we'll have a lot of partners. So it's the same for our white educators, our white students. Right now, we have a group of teachers looking at how can we teach our students, all of our students in school, but especially our white students. How do you, how are you an ally? And how do you stand up if you hear some of those racialized bullying things happening? Because I know as a white female growing up in this area, you don't always know what to say, and you know you should say something. So it's on us to intentionally teach those skills. So it is absolutely a critical piece of it. Thank you.
Mr. Chen? I've got two questions. First is, back in June, the nine-sixteen board, which I said, I represent this board in this district, we did have a retreat, and equity was the topic there as well. And one of the videos, or the video I presented was shown was by a doctor, Deanna Shul. And I was very impressed by how she was able to encapsulate and point out the various areas of bias that, you know, I had not really thought before. And then made it, it broke it down and made it much more understandable, systemic bias or racism. Are we using any, or wanting to use any of her works at all? Videos or anything that starts carrying of staff or students? Or, you know, I'm just curious if it's anything in the works.
So we have had schools do book studies around Ravindran Angelo's work. We have shown videos, yeah, it definitely is a part of. Because what it does is it gives language, especially for me as a white woman and growing up white to understand. especially for me as a white woman and growing up white, to understand what that means in terms of whether it makes what's invisible visible. So it gives you language for stuff that you maybe could feel, or maybe didn't understand, but you don't know the words to describe it. So, yeah, many teachers. I know one of our elementary schools had a whole, their whole school Reddit, and it was because the teachers in that school and staff wanted to engage in the conversation.
So we will have new some of her works?
Yep, we have, and we will continue. Yep, she is one of the, we actually went and saw her speak at Urban Leadership Academy. She's phenomenal. She was phenomenal to...
All the way.
Yep. In the book, people talk about it's white fragility, but she also, she has other books as well, so I can't think of the other one. It's a longer title, but North Campus read that book, and that she cooperated that with someone. But, yeah, she will. And that, and what was the other thing I just referenced?
Sergeant Brubaker, Leadership Academy.
There's two areas I feel like are new learning in terms of equity professional development, and one is the language around what, you know, what...
Anti-racism.
Yes, that's it. Anti-racism. Nope, that wasn't it. It is for sure. What it means to be white and what that, like, the language around it. And then Deb said something, and I said, we're going to put together PD for it. It'll come back if we're talking. I can't remember.
The other question is, human function, or it was about, I think, or maybe it was, it was about Jenda, which is working on reviewing some of the curriculum relative to a lot of those things that's coming out in Stanford. And maybe you've already mentioned, then, I've been predicting this to what process is going to be used to, you know, from a personal color's lens, to make sure that those alignments aren't really occurring. I mean, you know, those of us that are white, growing up white, you know, we can't relate entirely to, you know, persons of color and what the issues may be that we do, but we don't necessarily understand. So I'm just curious what the, is there going to be a process to kind of also look from a personal color's lens as to this alignment, to making sure of the news?
Gotcha. Board member Chapman, thank you for the question. One. Two, the way I tried to explain what Ms. Babish is doing is really creating a logic model of all the things that we say are equity initiatives, and putting them together, and then creating meaning from that. What does this mean? We've been doing this for three years. What has been the result of it? Was it implemented with fidelity, or is it implemented with infidelity? Did it get down to, did it get down to the staff level? Did it get it down to the teacher level? So really just seeing some of our initiatives and seeing how they are in practice today. More importantly, or as important, do we continue doing it? Is it really helping our equity initiatives? So not as much around literature, but perhaps it might be as it relates to, the second point that you made, narratives from people of color. As we're doing things, and as we're going forward, similar to the focus group, similar to the survey that was administered, we are trying to get multiple narratives. But here's another practice that we're also trying to be very intentional of, is making sure that when we're in design phase, that we have a multicultural perspective. And being true to, if I'm the only person that represents African-American males, I got to state that. And that this is from one African-American black male's perspective, and another African-American black male's perspective, maybe different than mine, but here's mine. And I'll give you a case in point. We have seen, over the years, corporations, sneaker corporations. One sneaker corporation, in fact, was going to come out with a shoe called the Shackle Shoe. And they were this close to selling it. Clearly, they didn't have multicultural perspective. That make sense? So we have, yeah, the Shackle Shoe. You can Google it. I don't know what, I want to put a disclaimer. I'm not trying to defame any athletic organization that will negatively impede our progress as White Bear Lake area schools, but you can Google it. There wasn't enough representation to say, that's not a good look. More importantly, that's not right. Does that make sense? So we are committed to making sure that we do our check-ins. But we also want to be understanding that our district demographics don't give us a huge pool. But we have people that we can talk to.
And then where we need, we get consultants to help us. There are people out there, you know, we have clever RTs, like I mentioned, from MCTC, practicing the, you know, leading the training for our social studies teachers. We learn alongside, and we get better than too, but that is true equity, is when you then allocate your resources in a way that you understand is a priority for you, and it's good for all students. All of our kids demand, and they should, that they are pushed further than when they entered, and that every single door is open when they graduate. Because we all know you enter, you walk through many different, where you land at eighteen is usually not where you end up as you go. And so we have work to do. But all of our kids, it'll make them all better, and they want it.
I was just going to say, in closing, to the question, that it is very important for us to remember that it is, it is not condemnation, it's realization. And with that energy, it allows us to go forward. Here's what community members are saying, and the data supports something's going on here. And all our children are not learning the way we want them to, they're not getting the learning experience that we want them to get, which is creating a different experience for some. It's like having two schools in one school.
Based on what I'm hearing, it sounds like there's going to be a broad-based look at all of this. There's going to be a lot of bodies, a lot of perspectives, you know, a lot of backgrounds racially and whatnot, so that things are not carried forward inadvertently, unintentionally, that have helped proliferate or helped the systemic racism to continue on. Because that's the last thing we want, is, you know, things keep getting kicked forward, kicked forward, kicked forward, not when they would get from, you know, the cultural and racial perspectives and all the different perspectives. Sometimes I think that's what's happened, to a great extent, for society. Oh, that's the way we've always been.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Humility, vulnerability, and transparency. We're going to do our best to get it right, but the truth of the matter is, there are going to be times we're not going to get it right. We have to own that and do better.
I'm sorry. In terms of curriculum for the US history, I know we've got the US human geography. I think I have a good model of that because you're taking this sociological perspective and probably to history. So you're going through all those different people. And Sonja, he was, he actually really liked the class because we had all these speakers coming in from all the different divisions. Some of those kids have never heard of or how it was written, and so starting that earlier, she was saying. Okay, starting it earlier. So that stuff we enter in high school isn't, it isn't a new thing to you. It's something you've already learned about, you've learned about from the sociological habits.
Absolutely. And it is something where, everything we do, we do stuff now to make sure we're impacting our students in high school, but you start young and influence the system. So then, I mean, not cliche, they're the future, and kids, you know, we know, in many different movements that student's voice has pushed adults faster than.
Just one quick thing I would share out with you. In June, I took one of the Department of Ed's workshops for media specialists and making voices effective. And I can share their list and their slideshow, but they talked, and they had five people from different ethnicities who were writers, and it was our voices, seeing our voices. And it was even kids as young as little ones reading board books, like Kendi's Anti-Racist Baby or something like that. There's lists of things. We don't have to wait for high school. There's lots of wonderful things for little kids that we can share it. And it's not just good for the kid that finally sees themselves reflected, but as someone else said, it's good for all of our kids.
Absolutely.
So, but if anybody wants that list, if I didn't send it to you already, because I'm proselytizing a lot of times, let me know. Just email me, and I'll send you the materials from that workshop. It was excellent. There was an indigenous, easy-reading book on Powwows and all kinds of good materials for younger kids, not just high school. So I'll be quiet, but this is lots of good things we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, concerns? Thank you all. Great work. Really appreciate the opportunity to hear the presentation, and thank you for watching us. Thank you. As a board, thank you all for your ability to put us in the direction and move forward.
Your support being more than you realize. Being administrators is a hard job, but knowing that you have a part of the party. I can say that confidently.
Is there anything else? Unless you have any, just general questions. So Monday, we'll be virtually, that's okay? We're all being virtually on Monday. Be virtually on Monday. Okay. Unless you don't want to, we could do this again, but that's what I was thinking, is we would just be virtually.
I'm fine with that, as long as everybody else is. I mean, I enjoy seeing everybody. I enjoy being back in the room. So I'm fine with coming in to wear my mask and meeting together, but virtual is the consensus. I'm fine with that.
So we'll plan on that, and then for August, we'll just revisit it. Maybe our regular meetings will become this form, look like this on August 10th, was it? We could do this again, and that might be a, this was a good trial run as to how we can move forward, and this is probably what it'll look like, something like this. I would think for a board, we do probably need to figure out the camera piece.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to figure out.
Can I add one more thing to figure out?
Yeah.
When we're all on a Zoom or a Google Hang or whatever, you hear people's voices, but as somebody out in the public, it's like watching a bad MSNBC where people kind of fade in and out. I really have a hard time following people. You know, it's all of a sudden, it's... So you said good stuff, but I bet I only caught half of it.
We got to fix that, Marge. Don't worry, we can repeat.
We have some work to do. Right. Boy, just, most, just to get this in an update I'll send, but I just wanted to mention Donna and I signed off on the sale of the certificates of participation, refinancing that. Our interest rate was below 1%. Point zero, oh, 0.97. So I believe what we had anticipated about 1.7% raise, we got 1.1. So hey, I always set that up. That's great. We rocked it in.
No, that's safe.
We got to be conservative.
So there's one about half. Yeah. The interest rate was just whether it go half or...
I mentioned that you're going to upload it here. That information at the next super agenda support. It'll be on Monday. It's an action item on Monday, because now we have the, so we approved Donna and I approved the sale, and now you approve the sale on Monday night. So our other spokes will be there, and we'll definitely help that out. So that's a bit of, a bit of news, and then we'll prepare an agenda item for our equity work on Monday night. And otherwise, I think the agenda is pretty well set. One more wholesale, I added Donna, that's news since we connected. I'll send information about that to you. Anything else? With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I moved it here. Got a motion from Dr. Arcan. Is there a second? Second from, I think I heard Ms. Thompson first. All in favor of me adjourned?
Go ahead.